Okay, I'll, uh. I'll call the, maybe the whole two order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest with respect to the items listed on the agenda? Okay, before we deal with the Corporate Services Report, Legal, 2013-14, are there any members that would wish to have the benefit of legal advice? And if so, I would ask that we go into a closed session to receive that legal advice, and then we can deal with the report following that information. Anybody wishing to have the benefit of legal advice? Okay, then let's go forward with respect to the Report Number 2013-14, and that's with respect to the Mary Annaville Developments Update and Appeals. We do have some, the report is seeking some direction from staff, and I'll entertain any motions. Counselor Emanuel?
I'd move a motion to receive the, the report for informational purposes, and that the matter be referred to a January Special Council meeting for discussion, and I'll speak to it after there's a secondar.
Okay, is there a secondar for that motion to receive this report and refer the matter to a special council meeting in January? Secondar, Counselor Twinni. Counselor Emanuel, could you speak to the motion?
Just briefly, and I actually, I think we'd benefit from some comments from staff as well, having attended the Board Meeting, and I know many of you did as well, but one thing I think is important, I just don't think it'd be appropriate that council makes a decision on this matter today, one way or another, with having just made a decision two weeks ago in public. If we were to ratify this tonight, I just, I think it would be a mistake. I think we rightly should get some more information. I know that the GPA has expressed to me that they intend to make a deputation on this matter, indicate their position, and I think those decisions are rightly made, I think, with a bit more time. This is a very short timeframe, and in staff's defense, the Board adjudicator, I think, expressed a desire to see council take a, or at least give consideration to taking a position, which our solicitor indicates in her report, but, so, as the mover, I'll speak to that, and then if I have questions of staff, maybe if, I was gonna ask that Esther maybe walk us through the process, what we'd be looking at in the mediation. I understand, for instance, all parties have to be agreeable to go into mediation. If that kind of high-level commentary could be provided by our solicitor, I think would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Okay, is there a secondar? Counselor Twinni? Okay, and if we could hear from our solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, the report basically provides an update following the second pre-hearing conference that was held on December the 10th, and lets you know that the, first of all, the town was successful in its request for consideration of a two-faced hearing, and that is a fairly significant outcome of last Tuesday's pre-hearing. The second significant thing was, as Counselor Emanuel pointed out, the OMB Chair did direct me to bring to council's attention that there is an opportunity for mediation, and that the Board has facilities and has mediators available if, if the town is willing to go that route. So, the, the purpose of this report was twofold, to really bring council up to date in terms of what took place, and also to let you know of the OMB direction. Now, in terms of Counselor Emanuel's question, and what can be expected at mediation, mediation is a completely voluntary process, so even though council has been asked to consider it, there certainly is not, council cannot be compelled, the same as all other parties, they, they cannot be compelled to attend mediation. For mediation to be successful, all parties would have to agree to participate, first of all, and, second of all, the parties would have to be clear on the issues that they wish to mediate. So, at this point, the Board has granted a two-faced hearing at the town's request. The first phase will deal with whether development is appropriate for the subject property, and council and the residents group would need to make a determination whether that issue is something that could be mediated or not, and if not, then we need to consider whether it's, whether the timing is appropriate to go on and mediate potentially the second phase, which would be more of the technical issues around the subdivision. So, that is certainly one issue that members will want to consider, and whether maybe it's premature at this point to consider mediating that since we've, or this council has just made the request to the Board to have a two-faced hearing. Other than that, there are no, if, if the town does attend mediation, again, it's a completely voluntary process. Nothing is finalized without all-party consent to an agreement, a settlement, and it can be an agreement on some or all of the issues that could possibly be mediated. So, certainly, parts of, parts of the, of the appeals could be mediated. There's a potential that maybe some of those things could be agreed upon, but again, it's entirely voluntary. The Board does, the Board does expect that if a party is going to mediation, that the representatives will have authority to agree to something. So, if there are things that might be agreed to, then council would have to provide staff with those directions prior to going into mediation, so that we would be very clear on the things that council might consider settling. Other than that, the, the timing, I guess, we've been offered time prior to the, the full hearing, or the first phase of the full hearing, which is to commence on March the 17th. So, the Board has indicated that it does have time between the beginning of January and March to mediate, and that was another reason for probably the offer to the town that they do have some mediators available at, at the moment. And, subject to any questions that you may have arising out of that, that's, that's some of the process around mediation.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Emanuel?
Thank you. Just further to the timing, the time that I've proposed where, because again, I have a concern about council making a decision today on this matter, with a January Special Council meeting, that is that timing sufficient with a decision point that day, no matter which way council directs to prepare for a mediation? Is that an appropriate timeframe?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, most certainly. It, it wouldn't be too late. I mean, the, the town could go to mediation at any time, you know, right up until days before the hearing, if the Board had the time to accommodate it, and certainly, it might be appropriate to wait until January to make that decision, so that there's further opportunity for discussion with the residents group regarding the points that could be taken to mediation, the points that might be considered for settlement, if any, and a few weeks, a few additional weeks to do that would certainly be appropriate.
Now, thank you. The, just to follow up then, just on process then, all parties have to agree to participate in mediation, and did I hear correctly that all parties would have to agree on all the issues that would be dealt with, as well as they all would have to sign off on a mediated agreement if it's to be considered an agreement?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
So, so I'm just trying to understand, say, if you initiate, because I suspect mediating, say, a matter of, say, principle is a challenge. It's pretty black and white, in my view, but if all parties went in with the agreement that that's what would at least be discussed, and, say, a party was not happy with where it was going, and they left, or they felt that they were going nowhere, the other parties could not continue to discuss the matter, that it would just be, mediation would be breaking off? I'm just trying to understand process.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, that is, that is my understanding, that all parties to the, to the appeals would have to also be parties to any mediated agreement.
Okay, and my final question, can discussions, comments, or information shared in mediations be used in a full OMB hearing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no. Those discussions, part of the mediation is the ability to speak frankly and candidly with the mediator in order to find those positions and find if there's any middle ground or any similarities that can bring some of these issues closer together. So, typically, the parties would sign an agreement either prior to or at the time of mediation, that all of the exchanges are confidential and will not be disclosed at the hearing.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, confidential, the term we've used before is without prejudice. Is that part of that? So, it doesn't prejudice your discussions?
Well, this is a, a, an Ontario Municipal Board process, so it is the Board's process and procedure that is confidential, and I think the Board would acknowledge that and certainly respect that confidentiality, because there is, there is a, a good purpose and objective behind mediation, and it does often resolve in shorter hearings and the settlement of, of certain issues. So, yes, it would remain confidential, and the Board would ensure that it does.
Thank you. Counselor Demuccio?
Thank you, please, for your feedback and advice. I just want to make sure, I want to get something straight. So, this is interesting, mediation, you said something that if, if the other party, assuming the other party agrees to the mediation, they have to agree to certain parts of, or what the criteria under the mediation, or the discussions under the mediation, so that's the first part. But you also said that all parties are authorized to agree with something if something is decided. So, what does that mean exactly? So, if they find a middle ground, you said that all parties are authorized to do something with that. What exactly does that mean?
Well, typically, at a mediation through you, Mr. Mayor, the party would be represented by their lawyer, and there would also be an authorized person on behalf of the party itself to say yes or no to something that is suggested as a potential settlement or an area of agreement. With the town, it's a little bit different, because council makes the decision, so it's not practical for council to go to mediation, so we would need direction in advance on the issues that are intended to go to mediation before we would be authorized to agree or not agree on those issues.
So, you, let's say, agree to a settlement or an issue, staff does, you bring that back to council, you make that decision. Is that correct? Is that?
Well, I, my understanding is that the, the mediators want the authority at the time of the mediation, so it's, it's something where we would almost be looking for authority in advance, knowing what the issues are, to understand what our parameters are at the mediation. Typically, we would bring a mediated settlement back. I don't know how accommodating the, the Board will be about that, but part of their process, and again, it's their process, is if they're working towards a settlement, it looks like they're getting close to one, they strongly encourage the people attending the mediation to be authorized to sign, to sign a settlement.
So, is there any risks then in, in going to mediation with council's position? Is there any risks of?
Well, again, it's entirely voluntary, so if council gives direction to go to mediation, I mean, you know, you, you take the opportunity to see if there are any areas that might be resolved, and if they can't, they can't, and there's no penalty for not having done so.
Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. Is, is your experience that, that an OMB Chair will typically suggest or offer up the mediation opportunity in, in most hearings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's typically the more complicated, lengthy hearings where mediation is offered, so definitely one where we've got the number of issues that we see in this hearing, that would be the type of hearing. You know, some of the smaller ones where maybe there's just a zoning bylaw amendment, or just subdivision conditions might not warrant mediation.
Thank you.
Counselor Twinni?
Thank you. So, I, so we, we're gonna refer this, so we're not making any decisions now, we're referring this to January, and so at that time in January, we can have a full discussion on if we decide to mediate, what those issues are, and we can, as a group, as a council, determine, I guess, what, what course of action we want to direct you with, if we want to go forward. And I'm assuming then that those, those mediation, they're in a closed session, are they? Like, they wouldn't be open to, so like, the pre-hearing that we had last week, that we all attended, well, the, you know, people were able to attend, it wouldn't be in that sort of a scenario. It would be closed, correct?
Right, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Only the parties are entitled to attend the mediation, so it is not open to the public generally.
And only the, the representatives for council could be, be able to attend, too?
That's correct.
Individual council members would not be able to attend.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, I just, I just, in my own mind, want to be clear, that all parties, all parties must agree on a mediated settlement, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and how many parties are there now? Four? There's municipality, there's Mary Annaville, there's the GPA.
There are five parties right now, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the York Region is also a party.
Okay, so, okay, all right. And so, what happens if three parties agree and two don't?
Then we can't do it. So, all parties will have to agree.
Okay, any other questions? Regional Counselor?
Sorry, yeah, can you just, and, and we don't need to know now, but can you just confirm at some point, though, whether, what I'm hearing was, well, there's one question asked, and the answer has been sort of consistently that all parties must agree to a mediated settlement, but that's not necessarily the same as mediation. So, could you, if, if you're not sure right now, could you check if mediation can still occur with less than five parties to be brought to the others, who, you know, somebody could walk away but eventually agree? I got, I'm just wondering, it, it's more a curiosity thing, but could, could mediation continue without everybody in the room? Because it's only the settlement that everybody has to agree to?
Great. Through you, Mr. Mayor, all parties must agree to mediate. So, it's both mediate and settle.
Okay, that's, that's the clarity I'm looking for, thank you.
A party can agree to mediate, but may decide that they're not going to take a position. So, that, that could be one possible way to participate, is that they will agree to mediation, not take a position, be presented with whatever settlement agreement is, is arrived upon, and then review it and, and determine if they're prepared to sign it.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Demuccio?
Thank you. Final question I had, obviously, whenever there's, you know, issues in mediation, does that, that affect the costs of, of this, right? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, one of the objectives of mediation is to try and reduce or eliminate some of the hearing and some of the issues that would otherwise be dealt with at the hearing. So, in that sense, one of the objectives is to reduce the cost of, of going to a full hearing.
But if no party can agree to certain criteria or whatever, then it does increase the cost, is that correct? Because we're going through that process and then possibly through the OMB process? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, there, I guess there is the potential that it could add additional days, additional time for the parties if they're not able to arrive at a settlement.
Thank you. Do I understand correctly that to, in order to go into mediation, this council would have to provide a mandate to its representatives in terms of what's in and what's out, and that might be some of our own internal discussions, and that would be an in-camera discussion because it's before a tribunal? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, and again, that is the Board's expectation. And again, that is the Board's expectation. So, it's not normally how this counsel functions. Typically, in many cases, staff would negotiate something, an agreement that staff can support, would bring that to counsel for direction. But in this case, I'm being told that counsel would, should provide a mandate in advance of a mediation if, if the direction is to go to mediation.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any additional questions? So, we have the motion, just to be clear, the motion is to receive the report for information purposes, and that the matter be referred to a special counsel meeting for discussion. And I just want to be clear, normally, our process would be a special committee of the whole meeting, and I think it's deliberate that we're saying that this should go directly to a council meeting. Counselor Emanuel, just to clarify. Counselor Twinn? Just, okay, no, I just wanted to be clear about that, because it's just a bit of a departure for our normal process. And I agree with it, and I can support that. Counselor Twinn?
Why would we not go to, through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to the mover, why wouldn't we go to a committee of the whole first, rather than going straight to counsel? Just to clarify.
Counsel wants to make that consideration. I just didn't want this matter ratified tonight.
No, no.
I'm just also concerned about the cycle, too. There is, while I think January, as you've expressed, a level of comfort with, if it starts going into a cycle, it could get long. Because our next cycle in January is mid-January, and then the council meeting, scheduled council meeting, isn't until...
Thirteenth. And the council meeting wouldn't be until the twentieth, so we don't, virtually, lose all of January.
So, that's why I don't think, that's why I didn't describe a date today. So, if staff wants to come back and suggest that maybe they could tonight, and he's being ratified tonight, these minutes. So, perhaps tonight, staff might make a suggestion on a date and time, and it might be appropriate for us to go to the whole council meeting, just seeking a decision point in January, not tonight. So, I have some flexibility, staff can perhaps recommend a recommendation on that date.
Okay, and my reason for raising it is it's not inconsistent with the way that we had the public meeting, in that we said, you know, we had the committee of the whole, and then we had a council meeting to ratify it in order to, to go forward with the issues and recognize the time constraints. So, going directly to a council meeting or a council meeting, and then subsequently ratifying with a special counsel meeting, I think is going through the same process twice, if time is urgent. So, I could, I could support going to a council meeting myself. But Regional Counselor?
Yeah, I think with getting some, some options back from staff tonight, or recommendations from staff would be helpful. I cautions the time, but if we, I guess what I'm suggesting is perhaps if the, if the special counsel meeting, we're only a couple of days after the first committee of the whole. I think that's kind of what Counsel Emanuel was suggesting, one possibility. Because, and I guess I'm just weighing in myself personally. I'd like to keep it moving, but would also love the opportunity to have two thought points on this, because we really, although we're saying we're dealing with it today, we really aren't dealing with much today. We didn't get into the meat of the matter, and to have time to reflect and think it through, and have that, what we refer to as an over-second thought opportunity, would be valuable, but maybe that's the way, is just to bring it closer to the committee of the whole.
Okay, then, should we make an amendment to that motion? Because the motion is directing it to a council meeting. Over in, secondar.
That the matter be, the second component, where I had figured special counsel meeting, the matter be referred to a decision in January, and staff will bring forward a date tonight. So, a decision in January. And I think there's some commentary that staff can appropriately determine.
What the process might be. Does that work for you, Mr. Sheldon, in terms of scheduling? Okay? See that as a friendly amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now, are we revising that resolution? Special Counsel?
I captured it. Don't be concerned about...
Okay, any further discussion? Being done, all those in favor? Any opposed, as carried? Good, and then we're agreed that this not, is not, it's not necessary to have a closed session, so a motion to adjourn would be appropriate? Counselor DiMuccio, seconded by Counselor Twinn. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Yeah, no, that's good.